For being here tonight with us, I will call this meeting of Montgomery County School Board to order at 7 o'clock on August 7, 2018. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our next item will be adopting our agenda. May I have a motion to adopt our agenda as presented?
Some move.
Motion second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We have an agenda. Next item will be Dr. Myers' announcements.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Yes, welcome back. We consider this the first meeting of the new school year, and so very, very excited. I hope everyone had a wonderful summer. I know I did. Today, actually, the new teachers started, and I believe we hired 92 new teachers this year, which is about the same every year. Yes, it's pretty, pretty normal. But they started, they had a great orientation day. All teachers will start on Thursday, and of course, the big day is next Wednesday, when about 9,500 kids, many of them get on the bus and come back to school. So I'm very excited about it for five kids of my own to go back to school. And so we're very excited about that. A lot of great news this summer. For one, for the first time since 2011, all 20 of our schools are fully accredited. So I'm just very excited. We received the first ever Workforce Readiness Award for the top school division between 5,000 and 10,000 students. And so we won that award from the Department of Education. Many of us went to Richmond to receive that award, but our work base and our internship program is one of the best in the state. And so just real excited about that, too. Something else that I would like to announce tonight is an interesting piece of data, and that is, I think it was in February or March, we had a group of 10th grade students at Blacksburg High School take the PISA exam. And what the PISA exam is, it actually ranks students. It's a worldwide test. And every year, the results come out, and usually, the United States as a whole ranks between 10 and 15 in science and reading and math. And so what we wanted to do was to see actually, how do our students compare to students of the world? We know where we are as a country, and of course, you know, a lot of folks give public education a hard time in the United States because we're ranked around 13, 14, 15 in the world in these areas. And so I wondered, you know, how would our top students at Blacksburg High School fare in this, in this test? The last time the, the results were released as a world in reading, math, and science, Singapore was, actually was the top country in the world in terms of test results. And I'll say Finland is in the top three usually, and I got the idea of giving our students this test because I went to Finland last year, and they talked about the great things they do, and they do a lot of wonderful things. But I thought, you know, we do some of the same great things. And so I wonder how our kids actually would do. So Singapore was top in reading, math, and in science. And our, our top students outscored Singapore in all three areas. We beat everyone in the world at Blacksburg High School. And so that's something to celebrate. In reading, Singapore scores were 535, average were 596. Math, 564, average was 650, almost 100 points difference. And in science, 556. Our top students were 608. And so I, I, I think we're doing real well in Montgomery County. We're outscoring the world in, in terms of a norm test. And so we're real excited about that, and, and please get that news out there. And if you're with the news here, please, I'd love to talk to you about it. So, but we're real excited about that and excited about this upcoming school year, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
The next item will be our awards and recognitions, and it's back to you, Dr.
Yes. Dr. Graham, if you'll come to the podium to assist with our awards, honors, and recognitions, we'd appreciate that.
This is an exciting time of the night when we honor and recognize great accomplishments within the division. And for our awards tonight, I would like to call Annie Whitaker, Director of Human Resources up to recognize our support, Employees of the Year.
Good evening. I hope you're all doing well. As you know, tonight, we have the great opportunity to honor some of our employees within the school division. You know, lots of times, you hear about schools, and we think just about teachers. And it's not just teachers. There are lots and lots of employees who work together to make our school division run, and we couldn't make it day to day without them. So it's really important that we recognize them. The way the process works is each school or department is given an opportunity to nominate an individual, and then from all of those who are nominated from their school or division, we select one overall winner. So what we're going to do today is share with you those folks who were nominated from their school or facility and have them come up, and then we'll also talk about our overall winner as well. So first, we'd like to, if you guys want to go ahead and line up. There we go. While they're doing that, I'll read the names of the folks who were not able to make it tonight. Karen Cecil, Betty Daniels, Jackie Dobson, Callie Dupree, Bobby Hale, Robin Hilton, Sandra Keith, Darlene Lester, Michelle Meredith, Raquel Sisson, Michael Trugillo, Melanie Wall, Karen Witt, April Dowdy, and Douglas Harless. Okay, first, we have Keri Bradshaw, who is an administrative assistant with us from Falling Branch Elementary School. All right. Next is Debbie Foster, custodian at AMS. Joyce Mitkif, who's an administrative assistant at EMHS. Lori Mitchum, cafeteria manager at AES. Tina Morrell, administrative assistant at Montgomery Central. David Skip Thompson, grounds worker with our facilities department. And Vicki Wallis, an instructional assistant at Price's Fork Elementary School. And our overall winner this year was Bruce Bentley, who's a computer technician. He was named the MCPS Support Staff Employee of the Year and has worked with Montgomery County for 13 years. Bentley was nominated for his initiative in managing almost 10,000 Chromebooks in the division, setting them up, delivering them to schools, completing repairs, maintaining inventory, and preparing every device for its user. These are just a few of the things that take up his time. We'd like to recognize Bruce Bentley at this time.
You want to come up here? I'll need somebody taller than me. I have my hat on.
I know, but the steps don't really make sense.
All right, ready? Oh yeah, hold your certificates.
We've got a few more in the, all right, okay.
At this time, we will take a five-minute break so that all the board members may congratulate those who were honored tonight.
For citizens to address the board about issues pertaining public education in the county. Each speaker is allowed a three minutes to speak and screens throughout the room, and the laptop will indicate that speaker has 30 seconds remaining. I do not have any individuals sign up at this time. Is there anyone on the audience who would like to address the board? Hearing now, the public address is closed. The next item is our consent agenda. Any questions regarding the consent items, board members? If not, we approve them as it is, as they are. They're all the, all our old minutes in field trips, and two grant proposals, one for Christiansburg High School Black Student Awareness Club, and the other one, I believe, Blacksburg High School Black Awareness, Black Student Awareness Club grants. Are we all good? And we approved our consent agenda. The next item, paying our bills. We have three, we have three bills to pay, so we'll approve them separately. May I have a motion to approve 2017-18 year-end bill payments?
Some move.
Any discussion? Do I have a second? Sorry. Okay.
Second, sure.
I wasn't sure. There were two, two moves, I think. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the July 18 bill payments?
Some move.
Second.
Any discussion regarding those? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We paid those bills. May I have a motion to approve August 7 bill payments?
Motion?
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussion regarding those? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? We paid all our bills. The next item is our business meeting, and starts with the board member reports. Any board members would like to share what they did since, since June?
I can.
Do you want to go, Ms. Graham?
Sure. So even though we didn't have any meetings, I certainly was still very busy from the school board side. We had the Montgomery County Educational Foundation Board Retreat planning for this upcoming year. I attended Camp Invention at Christiansburg Middle School, and it's always amazing what those students are doing. And this year, it seemed like the projects from Camp Invention were better than I've seen them in the past. And one of them was building a house, and what inventions do you think would benefit people in the next 10 years? And so that was really neat, because one of them was a washer and dryer that does self laundry and dries and hangs it.
I liked that.
I'm like, that'll be a good patent. I'll take that first. I'll beta test it. And then we, of course, had our school board retreat, and we did the, along with that, we did the 100th bus presentation from Thomas Bierman, which was quite exciting, and that was a great presentation, being able to see the bus drivers there. And I also participated, well, I judged the bus rodeo that they had in Roanoke, that some of our folks went to, as well as other counties. Went to the VSBA Education Conference that Dr. Meyer mentioned previously, where we got the very first award that has ever been given out for the workplace readiness. And then lastly, this past week, I went to the Teaching Tolerance Workshop with the administrators, which was absolutely amazing. It was, I'm very glad I chose to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Graham.
Okay. Now that I got my iPad on, I'm good. I've been following Marty around, so, you know, I've got the same thing she's got. So I'll just share because I'm really bad about, we were, I was just telling Connie earlier that, you know, I'm not in practice about taking notes and listening at the same time when I'm at a conference. So it's a real struggle. I'm trying to listen and write down, and by the time you write it down, they've moved on two slides, and it's just, so I'm not a good presenter, bringing back what I've, I've heard. But the conference that we, I did get to go to, because it was on a Tuesday, for the, on education, which we did get the award, and it was very, very great. I loved it because it was a roundtable-type atmosphere, and that's so much better, I think. But there was a guy who was speaking, one of the keynote speakers, and I think everybody had seen him before, maybe I hadn't, but he was talking about, he was into bikes and all this kind of stuff, and he had moved on to being a, like a hands-on type teacher. And he had, you know, that everybody now, students have lack of soft skills, which I truly agree, and he was phenomenal. I thoroughly enjoyed him. And one of the things I really grabbed from him is his experience making a gift for somebody, and I've been saying that for years, like at Christmas, quit buying, make somebody something, because it's truly, truly, it, it just does something different. And I kind of rated my, the sessions that I went to was all in one room, of course, as everybody knows, but all of mine were great. Now, we went to the same ones on the solar. I, I wasn't thrilled with that because I don't think they were very informative. I don't think they did a good job.
Right.
But I liked the idea. I just didn't think they did a good job explaining to somebody like me that doesn't have a clue about it. It was very like, I left not knowing any more than when I sat down, but the other three were great. One of the ones that I truly enjoyed listening to, and I think she had done a great job, was Restoring Discipline. And what they, pretty much the whole basis of it was, if, say, if someone did graffiti on a wall, they did an estimate with the maintenance, they sat down with the, the maintenance group, found out exactly how many man-hours, what it would cost to fix it, and took the student with the parent and sat down, and they had to actually, you know, kind of say, "I'm sorry." It was a, they had to face what they had done, and then they worked those hours to work it off, so it was a real hands-on kind of deal. And I like that, because I think now, we just kind of say, "Okay, you're out," or "You're in this," or "You're in that," and then somebody else cleans up and fixes the mess. And I just really believe if you did it, you need to clean it up. So I really was all about that. And she, you know, shared some books and things that they did, and that it was a step-by-step learning process, and sometimes it was hard for people to sit down and face each other, but they found it to be very rewarding, and that the students, once they had to look at another student in the eye and say, you know, "I'm so sorry," it truly was much more meaningful than just, you know, "Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry." So that was, that was a great session. And of course, I'm really into CTE, and so one of the ones was the, I can't even remember exactly where they were from, but they were just talking to Goochlin County, I should have known that. And they had Cat, Caterpillar, and Lucky Companies, which was a rock quarry, and which made me think, you know, we've got a couple of rock quarries pretty close, and I don't know if we've used those, but they instituted into their current technical education heavy equipment operating. And we have a lot of that around here, and I know some heavy equipment companies, and they're making bank. So anyway, that was really neat, and they just went and kind of said, "We want you to come in, and we want..." And some of those companies let them borrow their equipment, and they said, you know, "We'll come get it if we need it." Now, maybe we haven't been as blessed to have that happen, but there might be somebody out there who's willing to do that. So that was really, really neat, too. Then I went to one from Olive White, and they were talking about building relationships. And the thing I took away from that was, they were just kind of saying, you know, whether you're working with your teachers or your administrators, use common language. Because as I've said the whole time I've been on the board, all of the different little things that, as educators, you guys know, I don't know. And so it's really hard for me to follow, and the average person is me. You know, that's, that's who the community is, and if we want the community, and as I've said this 1,000 times, to buy into the school system, you got to talk to them with common language. You can't use the language that, you know, everybody knows except for ones like me that aren't in the system. And, and there's nothing wrong with that, it's just I'm just, I thought that was kind of cool how they said that. Now, everybody's on the same page. Everybody knows what everybody means and what everybody's talking about. And they actually used these things called Focus Documents, which I thought was really, really neat, too, and I brought them back. Let me just find them for you. But it, and it was something that they, well, I don't know what to do with, did I leave them down there with you, Brenda? No, here they are. But it was really neat, too, and they actually gave us each one of them, and, and it explained out, and I know we have stuff like this, but they kind of gave this to every, every person, every, every, everybody, parent, student, teacher. So there again, everybody knows exactly. Anyway. So that was, that's me. That's all I have. I came home, I went shopping, and then came home.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Okay, so Ms. Graham said, we had our board retreat, which is always interesting. We also, you know, did that 100,000th bus. Well, folks, the bus was just a regular bus. Nothing different, same, yellow, yep. Okay. But what I took away from that was, at the luncheon, the folks had drivers from across the state, they had mechanics, they had other boards, and they also gave away a scholarship. So they had the president of the university there, too. So my biggest takeaway from that whole event was, there were a lot of people who came together who make those buses happen, to keep those buses going. They even had folks from the manufacturing floor there. So that was my big takeaway, is, you know, it's not just the board members who put out the money for those buses, it was actually all the people who were involved across the region who helped make that company successful and make good buses for us. Let's see, I wrote a couple of things down. Went to our summer graduation, which was just wonderful. Small group of students, and we got to hear, you know, what those students had accomplished, what they're looking forward to be, to do in the future. And folks, sometimes, I believe, think that our summer school graduates are folks who just got behind, and they're trying to hustle to try to just get that diploma, which is absolutely not true. You know, for whatever reason, these students have chosen, or they're in, at a summer school graduation, and sometimes, just because I want out of here early, okay? And others, it's just, this is what I want to do. It was just amazing what those students were aiming to accomplish now that they're out of Montgomery County Schools. So, you know, again, it's one of those stigma things that we need to make sure folks understand what that's all about. I also was at a union meeting this weekend and was able to hear about a apprenticeship program developed by the Department of Labor with money that goes along with it. So I'll just pass that on to Dr. Myers, and hopefully, we will be able to use some of those funds and resources to step up our apprenticeship programs. So I'm hoping to see how that might work out.
That's exciting. Thank you, Ms. Franklin.
Ms. Rock?
Sure. So unfortunately, I was not able to attend our board retreat. I was out of the country at the time, so I did not get to see the bus.
It was yellow.
It was yellow. As much as the bus goes, at least. But, you know, people are more interested in the buses anyways. But I did do some participation electronically while I was gone, tried to. I did get to attend the Conference on Education when I got back, and went to some of the same sessions and a couple of different ones, so I'll talk about a couple of those. One that I attended was the Teen Mental Health, and I'm going to defer to Ms. Karan on that one, because I know she went to that one and took some wonderful notes and has some data on that, so I'm going to defer to her on that one. Interesting, we both also attended the School Law Update, which centered a lot around the new regulations involving student suspension. And each year now, we keep getting bills coming to our legislators, legislators asking us to limit suspensions. And in particular, a lot of what we were seeing were limiting suspensions in elementary school. And, you know, your first thought there is, why do we need suspensions in elementary school? But unfortunately, we do. And another session I went to actually tied into that, and it was, it was part of the discipline, like what Ms. Bond went to, it was a different session on discipline. And this was, it was a cross between alternative ed and ISS, so it was felt somewhere there in between. And in this particular case, they were implementing in middle school, but they talked about how, because basically what they were doing was alt-ed, but on the campus of where the student's home school was, how that could be done in the elementary setting. We, of course, do not have an alt-ed center for elementary. Fortunately, I don't know that we've had a great need for it, but I've been to conferences and met with other superintendents and board members who regularly can have three to five kids of elementary age in some sort of alternative ed setting. So just some good information on, should the need ever arise, how you might implement something like that at the school campus. Another session I went to was, it was about classroom design to cultivate, it says classroom design to cultivate, cultivate deeper learning in mathematics. So it's a mathematics teacher, and he had started as a fourth-grade teacher, and eventually made his way to high school, where he was teaching algebra primarily to ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. And of course, he started the session by saying, I think all of you here know, if I'm teaching Algebra I to ninth, 10th, and 11th graders, I'm teaching it to the kids who have either struggled all the way through or are taking it for the second, third time. And he sort of took what he had learned as an elementary teacher, and this is not dumbing down mathematics, but this is, this is applying a different culture to how you teach math. And it started with the classroom setting, and it wasn't, you know, five by five desks lined up with a teacher standing in front. It was more like centers and stations. There were a lot more manipulatives, and there was a lot more self-teaching and collaboration going on between the students. So he would start his week lecturing, but then the next three days, they were working together in groups at different stations to help teach each other mathematics, but also he would come and help them. And then at the end of the week, you know, they would come back together and see what they had learned as a group. And he had pass rates in the 90s after, as a result, and these were, like I said, mostly kids who failed mathematics. Coming from a math background, it was nice to hear, and, and also, because of the foundation, we've gotten a lot of grants for things that he put in that classroom, but all the grants we've, requests we've gotten have been from elementary teachers for things like active seating and manipulatives and things like that. But it just goes to show that, and I think we all know this, because we're going to talk about recess, our older kids need that activity level as well. They can't just sit in a classroom for 45 to 90 minutes a day being lectured to. They need to be active. So that, I thought, was really, really interesting. And then the last one I ended up with, which was sort of a fun one, but it was really neat, Miss Spotsylvania County, they do a culture festival. This is a division-wide festival where they bring together art, music, and theater, and they do a, so they hold their all-county band and their all-county choir at this. They have their art display, including like their Scholastic Gold Key Award winners there. They, oh, and foreign language, that was the other thing they brought in. So they did similar to what I think Beeks does, where you had food being served from various countries of the, you know, the language the kids had studied, and then you had theater doing performances. So all of this was going on at one time, in one place, and they would alternate between their high schools. So everybody got to host it at some point. It was a really nice way, and what it really did was bring in the community to see what we're doing in our schools. Because typically, when you just have a school event, you're only going to see the parents, maybe some grandparents. They advertised it as a community event, and they had food and things like that, and they could do fun, you know, they allowed some of the groups to sell, do bake sales, some raffles and things like that, so it worked as a fundraiser as well. But it got the community to come in and see all those different, you know, extracurriculars and electives. So I really want to talk about it.
Yeah, but in a place you do that countywide.
Yeah. And of course, I did host the MCEF Board Retreat at, at my house and led that. And of course, going along with that, we did open our grant cycle on August 1st. So if you go to our website, it's up. It will be up until midnight on October 8th. And we've already received our first, first application, so we are up and running. And then the last thing I did last Thursday, I want to thank my bocce ball partner sitting over here, Mark Hunsman, our new CTE director. We braved the rain for three hours. We braved the rain for three hours to play bocce ball, and it was with the Montgomery County Chamber of Commerce. And that is their annual fundraiser that supports our Teacher of the Year program. So it was, it was fun. We did come out with a respectable three and two record. So we were better than 50/50, but fortunately, not good enough to make it in the tournament, so we got to go home. That was it.
After you guys went.
We got out of the rain after three hours.
Thank you. Do you know how big a county is Spotsylvania?
Sounded like they were similar.
Similar, yeah, I was just wondering that.
Just based on the number of schools.
Yeah, based on the number, yeah.
Sounded similar.
I think the last one will be me. I did a lot of traveling. I went Richmond twice and Charlottesville, one seems like all, all my time went on 64 during July. The first one was July 11th, the VSPA Legislative Position Committee Meeting in Charlottesville. I represent Blue Ridge Region at that committee, and basically, they will look at the proposals from school boards, and then they will amend or reject or approve, and then it goes to the VSPA Board of Directors. And then after they swip through, it will go to Delegate Assembly in November when VSPA have the annual meeting. So the delegates from 132 divisions will say yea or nay those priorities. And this time around, there were 18, 13 proposals from six school boards, Bristol City, Fairfax, Goochland, Prince William, Roanoke City, and Virginia Beach. One of the, you know, I don't wanna go through all those. Most of them got, with a little amendment, approved, and I, I think passed that information to Ms. Graham. I'm hoping I did. If I haven't, I will do. So you will have it before, before November as our representative there. But one from Roanoke City was interested, and I shared that information with Dr. Meyer already. I never thought about that could be a problem, but their legislative position is to be able to universally test colorblindness. They realize that colorblindness actually affects so many of our students, especially SOL test time, when they thinks on the screen highlighted yellow, blue, or orange, red, and if they can't tell the difference, what part of the map, you know, highlighted, or, you know, what question that needs to be looked at. You know, a lot of, you know, failing students for that in that area. So they try to push a legislator that say we'll have a funding, so we will do universal colorblind tests for, for their students. So I thought that was interesting, and I was curious about if it's an issue for our county, or if we ever know how many numbers do we have, or do we, you know, even test, especially lower socioeconomic families that they don't take their kids on a regular basis to I-Doctor. That was a, that was a big, big issue, and I never thought that could be a, you know, issue in test-taking. And I think most of the kids then labeled as ADHD, even though they are not, but they just can't see to answer any questions. So I thought that was, that was an eye-opener for me. And then I went to, of course, VSPA Conference with my colleagues, and I attended mini workshops on teen mental health, restrictive justice, gifted identification for equity, and everything you need to know about public procurement, and new limitations on student suspension and expulsion under Virginia law. I passed all the information to the related parties, but regarding the teen mental, and I shared that, I shared that too, and I shared gifted identification with Ms. Knaff as well. And I passed the teen mental health to Ms. Hippel and Ms. Baldwin. With the teen mental health, the Suffolk City Assistant Superintendent was there sharing the information. And basically, they train all their 10th graders and 8th graders regarding mental health, basically with the suicide. And they watched a 24-minute video done by the students. And, and, and then they talked about it, discussed, but the facilitators were through the American Association of Prevention of Suicide Group. And then if you look at their site, they said there are local foundations that are, you know, because the foundation has born, somebody lost a child for that, and they wanna help the communities, and they, you know, give all the tapes free, all the people that are gonna go through the training free. Because my first question was, how much that will cost? Because I know it's important, you know, whether we have to allocate, you know, budget for it, even though mental health is number one for me at least. So that was interesting, and I hope we will look into. And, and they did it in the classroom, and they train so many of their students, so many of their faculty, and they are down to training their bus drivers, and, you know, aides, and everybody that greets and talks to kids. So that was a really important one. I don't know if I'm missing anything else. And I gave all the numbers and the statistic, because they sent a survey after that, and so many students actually said, you know, 90%, I'm pretty sure that they said, wow, you know, now we know, you know, if we see something, at least we will approach a person and ask, or give the direction that they can go and ask help. So it was really eye-opener for the students to go through that training. And then I was, I attended with a group of educators to July 23rd, on the July 23rd and July 24th to Virginia for All Learners Equity in Education Conference. And I miss you, Ms. Franklin, unfortunately. And the sessions were, of course, incredible. And I know, you know, the information, you know, shared, and I know Ms. Diggs was with me, Ms. Hippel was with me. And, you know, one session was interesting, I mean, they were all interesting, it's so hard to fit all the summary here. But the Fairfax, I know it's a big county, it's hard to compare, but they did the journey creating a joint equity policy. And what they did is, their Board of Supervisors and therefore, School Board, both decided this equity is a priority, and they sit around the table and they develop a policy, you know. So it's not just equity within our students and school system, but it's also equity, you know, within the residents or the people lives in the county, you know, whether it's a house issue, or whether they get the water, or, you know, whatever, you know, it's not equitable in the, in the community itself. So I thought that's a really nice come-together for both parties and work for a common goal. And again, I had all the information passed around. And there were great keynote speakers. One was Dr. Ivory Tolston, and he deconstructing the achievement gap to move from equity to excellence. And I mentioned that to Dr. Meyer. Maybe he will come and talk to all our teachers. And, 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 you know, he was dissecting the data and actually how data not necessarily shows what our kids learning. You know, he said so many reasons the data can fail us, maybe because the kids, you know, don't wanna take the test, or they don't, you know, care about the test, or they didn't sleep well, that's why. So it's, you know, failing SOLs doesn't mean that, you know, kids don't know. So that was an interesting one. And then I attended July 30th, our Administrator's Retreat, first day. I know they had a week-long one, but I, it was a great session for me, and I really impressed the session by Dr. Dacre reaching our students together. So all students, every, every day, every student, you know, so we have to care for each child every day. So that was a really good session on co-teaching. And this morning, I welcomed our new teachers at Auburn High School. That was really nice to see a lot of smiley faces. And the biggest takeaway was so many experienced new teachers out there. I mean, there are new, new teachers, you know, stand up, and they were helpful, but then there were teachers from one to three to almost all the way to 27-year experience, I think, standing up and they came to teach in, in our county. So it was, it was wonderful. So that, that's it. I think that wraps up my summer.
And if I could follow up on a few notes.
Sure.
You all sort of jarred my memory from the summer. But first, I'd like to, you know, let you know, I'd let you know, we were having an administrative retreat last week. We had our first retreat probably in a while for administrators, at least since I've been here, and it was four days of the retreat. It went really well. Had all of our administrators there, other central office personnel, guidance counselors also, attended some of the, some of the, a couple of the days. But the first couple of days, we did have Lisa Decker, who's an expert in special education from University of Central Florida. And she did a wonderful job. And, of course, that's an area that we're gonna, we're gonna really focus on. Our finance department gave us some updates, our human resource department gave us updates. We talked about how we could better communicate between ourselves and our schools. We talked about staff evaluations. We trained our principals on eDiscipline, which is a new online discipline program. So basically, this year, our teachers will not have paper that they write out, there are any referrals on. It's actually an online program that will track it even better. One day, we had lunch with law enforcement and, and some folks from the Department of Education come down and speak with us, and, and Ms. Diggs and her department helped us with that. On last Wednesday, we had a full day of threat assessment training, and our, our staff was trained on a new threat, threat assessment process. And that, basically, anyone who is on a threat assessment team at the schools came and attended that, that session. It was an all-day session, and it went really, really well. Thursday was teaching tolerance. Wonderful, of course, Ms. Graham was there. Wonderful session for an entire day. We had guidance counselors there as well, along with administrators. A lot of positive feedback with the teaching tolerance session and a lot of momentum. We're gonna bring back the teaching tolerance folks for a day sometime this school year, and we're gonna have, you know, many teachers actually, the most they can do it one time is 80. I'm hoping we have 80 teachers who will come and participate in it, but I think that shouldn't, should not be a problem. This, this group was recommended to, to myself by two teachers from Blacksburg High School who attended their teaching tolerance conference in Raleigh earlier in the school year, and I can see why they would recommend this to our school division. So just, just a excellent, excellent workshop. Also, on that day, I had the opportunity, I, I left teaching tolerance for about hour and a half, and I went over to Blacksburg High School. Our IT department did an absolutely wonderful job. They did a, a one-day conference on, on technology, and they opened it up to other school divisions. And there was about 150 people there participating, and probably about, I think it was about 60 from other school divisions who actually attended. And I had a lot of positive feedback from our folks. You know, we're one of, I think, is it Google told, we're one of the most googly school divisions in America. And so we showed the folks how googly we were, and it was pretty, pretty awesome. It really was. Lot of, lot of great participation. Folks were really into it. So thanks to our IT department for that. So I wanted to make sure I mentioned that. Yep.
Say googly, it reminds me those googly eyes.
I'm picturing you all with googly eyes.
I will turn it back to you, or shall I, shall I, I can continue if you like me to.
The grants.
But you're gonna explain the grants.
Yes. I'll go through the grants. So we have several grants this evening. First, a grant proposal, Structurally Controlled Thin Film Materials Via Solvent Evaporation.
That's pretty fancy.
Yes, it is. An assistant professor in the Physics Department at Virginia Tech has included summer internship opportunities for high school students as part of his NSF career grant application. In any of these grants, grants, Dr. Schultz is here to answer your questions about any of these grants, if you have any questions. But this grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant titled Career Structurally Controlled Thin Film Materials Via Solvent Evaporation?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussions?
I think it's great.
It is great.
I think it's a great opportunity.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we approve the grant.
Okay, thank you. The next is MCPS COPS SVPP School Safety Project. MCPS has partnered with the Montgomery County and the Sheriff's Office to apply for grants through the Stop School Violence Act of 2018. The proposal would enhance security equipment at nine different schools. The grant would also fund a two-year part-time emergency management coordinator position within MCPS. This grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant titled MCPS COPS SVPP School Safety Project? So moved.
Second.
The motion is second. Any questions?
Yeah. So, I just lost it. So what is the, wait a minute.
Yeah, question.
It's the scoring thing.
Yeah, a couple of folks who would like to come up and talk about it, because we partnered with the Sheriff's Department.
The, well, the safety, is that what it's called? Safety coordinator positions?
Yes.
The first-time emergency management coordinator.
Yeah. Okay, so exactly what do they do?
Sure, come on up.
So the grant only will support, it's a two-year grant.
Right.
So we tried to write the position to help us create a comprehensive plan for Montgomery County Schools regarding safety. With all of the new information and guidance and suggestions that we're getting in regards to how we should be structuring safety within our school division, we thought it would be really nice to have somebody that could be really attentive, attentive to that piece. And so devising a plan, a really comprehensive plan for us, and knowing that it's gonna only be a two, two-year position, one that it's, we would sustain it by it being pretty much a process. They would be creating a process for us to follow.
Anything you want to add?
No, I would just like to thank. I would just like to thank Judy and Dr. Schultz for their work on this, because it was a cooperative process to get it all done in the small window that we had to.
And there was a small window.
To get it squeezed into.
Yeah, and we appreciate your work on this as well. You know, the, it, it's real, I've had several conversations with Ms. Diggs about this, and there are several school divisions who are hiring this position. I believe Roanoke City just hired this position.
Yes, they do.
And just the amount of work that Judy has done, in addition to her other job duties in terms of school safety, it's amazing. It's been very time-consuming over the past six months.
Oh, yeah.
And if we were to receive this grant, to have someone who that was their job to, to, you know, to, to look at our schools and identify needs, and, and, and an expert, you know, someone, you know, probably through law enforcement, who had had law enforcement, a law enforcement background, to actually, to give us suggestions and to look out for our safety. And, you know, we have to do crisis plans every year. We actually, you know, luckily, we work with three great law enforcement offices who work with our schools on their, on their management plans, crisis management plans, and their school safety plans. But it, it would be great to have more expertise on our side, because they, they have a limited number of resources and time as well. So what, you know, we'll see if we get the grant, you know?
Hope so.
We hope so. Yeah, crossing fingers, so we will keep you updated.
And is this something that our safety committee would continue to look at and perhaps, you know, make a recommendation for, if it's something worthy of making a full-time?
Yeah, absolutely. And this is something, this is what's great about a grant like this, if we could get it, you know.
Get the process started.
Evaluate the value.
Right, exactly.
You know, of the position, and then see if it's something that we want to, we wanna move forward with. But in, in, in this day, it's something that is in the front of everyone's minds, and that's the safety of our kids and schools. And it is, we spend a lot of time, which we should, making sure that our kids are safe. And we've, we've gone, I mean, half of our training this past week, about half the time was spent with our principals on school safety. And, and so that, that's how much we're making it a, a priority. And so.
I just have a quick question. Why we don't have Falling Branch and Margaret Beeks not listed on the list of elementary schools?
So Harvey and Judy worked together to look at the list of schools where work had not been completed yet. So these are the schools that don't have the.
Okay, so the other two come.
Yeah, these are the ones that have things that are missing still that they're adding to.
Okay, I was curious. Thank you. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, we approve our grant.
All right, thank you. The next is MCPS School Security Equipment Project. This year, we're applying to the State for School Security Equipment Funds to benefit CES, CPS, and Harding Avenue. This grant is brought to you tonight for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve the grant titled MCPS School Security Equipment Project?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussions regarding this one, board members?
Just curious, will this, are there other schools that are also missing this equipment that we would eventually want to do it to as well? Or are these the only schools missing this equipment? Do you know, Jonathan?
Harvey.
Or Harvey, either one?
He's back behind the window.
Is he waving at me? Essentially, yes. I mean, this would complete, between the two grants, it would complete the video cameras at all the schools. It would complete the two-way radios at the elementary schools that don't have them. There are, there's another category of equipment that we're still looking to add. It escapes me as to what that other column on the spreadsheet was, but it was the intercoms, the intercom systems. And that one's a really expensive piece. This is a grant that we've actually applied for, I think, five times. We've gotten it four times, three times all the way, and once partially. So it's just the next phase in the schools that haven't had it yet.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our grant.
Okay, thank you. Next is the VSBA Media Honor Roll recognizes fair and balanced reporting about our schools. We recommend that Sam Wall and Lynch Kirchner from the News Messenger be nominated for the VSBA Honor Roll. With your approval of the attached resolution, we will submit their names to VSBA.
May I have a motion to approve the VSBA Media Honor Roll Resolution as presented?
Motion.
Second.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions, board members? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the resolution.
Okay. Okay, next.
Our board goals.
Yes, our board goals. At the school board retreat, the board discussed its 2018-19 board goals. A draft version of the goals was presented for review on June 19. The change suggests that that time was incorporated, and the document tonight is brought to you for your approval.
May I have a motion to approve 2018-19 board goals as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion and second. Any discussions? Very good. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve our goals.
Okay, thank you. Next is Policy 7-2.3, an attendance policy. This policy was revised in June. The change tonight corrects a place where the policy was not in line with itself. The word consecutive is removed before undocumented absences. The new change will be brought to you on August 21st for your approval. Are there any questions regarding this? Pretty simple change that we need to make.
Yeah.
Okay. Next, Policy 6-2.4, Animals in Schools. This is the first reading of this policy. This change, this was a code change in the past couple of years, and our policy had not been changed to be in line with the code of Virginia. This change allows teachers to bring in turtles, birds, and ducks as they relate to the educational interest of students, while animals are still not allowed on school property. Policy will be brought to you for your approval on April 21st.
August 21st.
That sounds discriminatory.
August 21st. I apologize.
Yes.
So.
Snakes are still not allowed.
Nope.
Frogs, no frogs.
So when they talked, when they talked about, you know, allergies and things, so that we still have students who, so what happens if we have a child who is in a classroom? I know it says the animal will be removed and not the student, you know, if they're a pet in the classroom all year. Just, I don't know, it just kind of sounds discriminatory, I guess. I don't know. No big issue, just a question.
But you're not talking about cats and dogs. You're talking about, like.
Science, like learning.
Yeah, turtles.
Right. But we have dogs in our school now, schools now.
Yeah.
Therapy dogs. And we have kids in those same schools who have.
If I understand, this is specifically wild animals. And now, these three classifications of wild animals are now allowed. Turtles, birds, and ducks.
Right.
But other wild animals are not allowed, so.
Correct.
Gotcha.
You can't bring the coyote to school, not even to CES.
That means lizards can't come in.
Yeah, the lizards can't come in. No kangaroos.
Please fill Tiddler.
If His reserves, at one time in the state of Virginia, turtles were specifically targeted not to be into schools because they were carrying disease.
Right.
Now, in talking to Patty G, who's not here tonight, that's no longer the concern that it was at one time. So.
They're being allowed.
Thus, the reason to not discriminate against those particular. And your allergies is a good question. We do go through, check with school nurses, that type of thing. If somebody has an allergy, then, for instance, one year, we kept a dog on one side of the school because there was a child with an allergy. So we do look at that, and of course, the child takes precedence.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, next, Mr. Pauli.
6-4.
Yes, would like to come up, because he'll be up for the next couple of policies in one's short presentation. One, Policy 6-4.3, Graduation Requirements. This is the first reading of this policy. The changes reflect changes of the Virginia Assessment Program, formerly known as the SOLs. Seems like they've changed that language.
Yeah, that's to be more inclusive, because it's not just going to be SOL tests, but other forms of assessment as well.
Right. The policy is also updated to say that the graduation requirements in effect when a student enters the ninth grade govern that student's graduation when they enter the ninth grade. This provides more simplicity in the policy and the board-approved program of studies clearly delineates the difference in the graduation requirements. It will be brought to you on August 21st for your approval. Any questions that you have, or Mr. Pauli, anything that you wanted to talk about in this change?
So all the details that we put prior.
Right.
Are they going to be on the handbook? You know, is that the handbook information?
Yeah, still be in the program of studies, all those charts.
Program of study, yeah.
So there are now four charts, because there's standard diploma and advanced studies diploma, if you've entered in ninth grade, 2013, 14 to 2017, 18, and then a chart for each diploma type for if you enter 2018, 19, and beyond.
Yeah.
So eventually, three years from now, theoretically, would be only two charts.
It will be, yeah.
So.
And they can't pull the rug out from under you once your graduation requirements have been established.
Supposed to be that way, yes, ma'am.
Not supposed to be able to change them on you.
That is correct.
Okay.
You know, let me say, one big change that I think needs to be noted is that for this current rising ninth-grade class, they will be required to pass one, I'll just use the word SOL test, to receive a verified credit in each subject area while in high school. And, you know, so what may happen, this is not may, but it's probably going to happen, for instance, this year, a ninth grader passes, for instance, a world history test. Once they pass that test, they do not have to take any more social studies test, which is nice, okay? You know, you pass one, so we're eliminating tests for students. However, students then get to 11th grade. They take US history. The ones who took the world history test and passed it do not have to take it.
Yeah, and it's not even just that you don't have to take it.
You can't.
They told us we will not test.
We're not allowed to.
We're not allowed to test them. Once they've met their verified credit requirement, we cannot test them.
So what will happen is, you'll have students in 11th grade who have not passed the test before now taking it. So the prediction will be our scores will go down. You'll see possibly a US pass rate going from 85 to possibly 50% all in one year. That could possibly happen, you know, because a lot of times, kids who fail tests, they'll continue to do so, unfortunately. And so that may, that may cause a dip in some of our high school scores.
And some tests, we anticipate never giving again, like chemistry, the chemistry SOL test. Those students likely passed the biology and/or earth science SOL test, so they will not take it.
That's a big.
And those used to boost, those used to boost school scores, because you would get nearly 100% pass on chemistry.
So I'm glad that the state has eliminated tests. I think it's great for kids. I really do. And given some other.
Hopefully, when they were assessing us, you know, they will.
Yeah, they recognize the situation they.
You know, hopefully, they will recognize that, all right, that is possibly going to happen.
There is a, there is a new assessment system as well that we will, we'll talk about at some point and educate you on. It's a little different than, it's a lot different than it used to be. You know, in fact, the new accreditation system will look more like the old federal system, where there are, there are gap groups. And so the state has not done that before. And so, you know, they've pretty much adopted the gap groups of the federal government, that schools will be held accountable for those groups, which I'm glad of. I'm fine with that. You know, we need to teach all kids, and I truly believe that. So, so, yeah, we'll give you that presentation sometime soon.
Education.
Once we figure it out.
Once we figure everything out.
Once the state figures it out, and then we figure it out.
There are actually questions that the DOE is, can't answer for us now. And in fact, some things they're saying to us are different than things they actually have in writing. And so that's sort of frustrating to Mr. Pauli.
I like things you know.
Writing, writing this, writing the policies for us and making sure it's in line. And so, but we'll, we'll keep working through it. You know, interesting, the federal government requires that we, that our kids take one math test in high school, and a question they cannot answer. We have kids who start, there are only three math tests. There's Algebra I, Geometry, and Algebra II. So we have kids who take Algebra I in sixth grade.
They're done in middle school.
They're done in middle school with all their SOL tested math.
Right. So does that count?
So.
But they don't know.
But they don't.
They're saying that they will allow a substitute test, like an AP test, assuming those will be the students that take AP.
Yeah.
But they've already taken the test. Why can't it count?
They'll, they'll figure it out.
So ask the.
Accumulated.
That's a good problem to have.
It's a great problem. So that's the, that's the, that's the Washington.
Yeah, logic doesn't work sometimes.
Yeah, unless you're a student who's already taken all those tests, and now I've got to take another one?
Yeah.
And they do have to take biology. I learned that fairly recently, that all high school students will take the biology SOL test.
They do not necessarily have to pass it, they have to at least take it.
I think that's for federal accountability. They have to do the biology.
Right. They do not have to pass it if they have passed their science. So we're still dealing with.
Well, that's right.
It is too confusing.
Sets of rules that we were hoping to eliminate. And the Virginia Department of Education is trying to do that as well.
Yeah, there's two sets of rules that are written, and then there's what they're saying. So there's kind of like three sets.
Yeah. Okay. Questions?
I think we're good.
So this is a first reading for that policy.
Yeah. We'll go home and read it.
Yeah, we'll come back on the 21st for approval. You know, we've, we've run the policies, you know, past our attorney. The policies are written from my understanding, it's not by choice. It's, it is, we've kept them in line with the regulations as we know them. The next policy is, there is some choice, the 6-6.2, Student Evaluation and Grading. This is the first reading of this policy. The changes allow for final assessment to occur through a variety of methods. And this will also be brought to you for approval on the 21st. And Mr. Pauli has some survey results from the final, this is going back to the final exam pilot. And he has some results to share with you, Mr. Pauli.
I do. So as you remember, two years ago, we piloted this simply at Auburn High School or exclusively at Auburn High School. It went very well, so we extended the pilot to all four high schools. And then we created, the principals and I created a survey for teachers, and then a separate one for parents and students, to see how everyone thought it went. It was a rather extensive survey. We asked a lot of questions about what went right with it, what went wrong with it, what can be fixed, people's opinions. But the data that I wanted to share with you this evening was, at the end of the day, how did people feel about moving forward with turning this into a policy? And so, for teachers, we got 197 respondents, which was good representation at the end of the year. This was done in May. And you can see it's distributed the way you would think it would be, with the bigger schools having more teachers than the smaller schools. And so what did the teachers say? The first was an opinion question, like overall, which of the following expresses your opinion of the process? And they had a choice of either, I liked having students only being required to attend school for SOL testing and remediation, or I would prefer having students required to attend school every day. And you can see that's over 94% of the teachers liked the way we did it. And then the $64 million question was, so would you like to continue with this practice, moving it into policy? And over 92% of the teachers said yes, they would. I would like to note that of the rather small percentage of folks who said no, I was able to break it down and look at it by school and by grade level and what they taught. Actually, a lot of those people who said no, and even a fair number who said yes, had very many good suggestions to improve it. Most of those suggestions have to do with really logistics and communication, people not really fully understanding how it worked. But philosophically, it was very, very strong approval from everyone. So then we did the same with parents and students. So it was after school let out and sent it home to parents and asked them to sit down with their children and talk about their opinions and their experiences. Some of it was rather entertaining, because several parents said, well, I feel this way, and my student feels this way, so I'll put what my student thinks, since they're the student, was probably the most popular. But still, a fair, fairly good representation with 336 respondents. And again, over 92% said that they liked the system of coming to school and setting aside days exclusively for SOL testing and remediation. That seemed to work very well. Again, with a few logistical scheduling type things, but we're going to tweak that. And then asking, again, the big question, would you like to see us continue this and move it into policy? And over 91% said yes, they would. So we feel like that is good enough to propose to you that we change the policies. I have to be honest and say that I actually rewrote this policy two years ago in anticipation of this day, and in hopes. And so, if you read through it, you would really see a huge section of policy completely eliminated, because a lot of it was about SOL waiver policy and final exam exemption policy, and the confusion that that caused. All of that's gone. Even changed a lot of the language as far as if you're at a traditional scheduled school or a block-scheduled school, because really, all four of them are hybrid-scheduled schools now, who have both types of courses. So some of that language has been cleaned up, and I think made simpler to read. And we took the opportunity to fix a few other things, but most part, you'll notice, it's the language right out of the presentations that were made to you, cut right from the presentation into the policy, and then looked at, vetted through the attorney, and turned back to us with approval. So we are seeking your approval in two weeks. And I'm here for questions.
Any questions, board members?
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, I'm just going to say.
For being the catalyst that moved us there.
A lot of work also.
Thank you. It was my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Policy 5-2.1. It's the first reading of this policy. This policy is updated to say the job openings will be posted for a minimum of seven days, changing it from a minimum of 14. And Ms. Whitaker is here to answer any questions. If you have questions, still.
Why?
Why?
Yeah, the recommendation for this policy change is really to help us with our staffing. You know, it says 14 days, and it says unless in an emergency. So those emergency situations do arise pretty often. You know, if someone leaves a position, and then we have to post for 14 days, they, we only have to get two weeks' notice. So then we have a gap in time where we don't have an employee. So it would help us in our staffing. We could, of course, leave it open as long as we chose to. But it would help us to make sure that we're filling positions and that our, all of our departments are having the staff in place that they need.
Any questions?
I'm just not necess, don't think I agree with it. I think 14 days gives more folks to be, have time to look at it, to make up their minds about it. Seven days can go really quick before people even hear about the opening. I'm going to be voting no.
I guess my concern, too, would be, would we get as good of a pool at seven days? And I realize you can extend it. If you look at it and go, no one's applied, or only one person has applied, you know, you can extend it, but.
You know, typically, what we work to do is, we want to find the best folks. So when we know in advance that we're going to have a posting, say someone tells us, I'll be retiring this year, or I'll be leaving, we certainly do everything we can to leave it up for a very long period of time, so that we can get the folks that we need to. This is more, you know, applies to situations where, again, you know, someone says, I'm leaving, and I'm leaving in two weeks. And then we have the two-week posting, the interview process, the. says two weeks, it makes it a lot harder for us. And then we have to try to find substitutes to fill those positions and, and that's very difficult in a lot of our support staff jobs.
So this is really, um, a rare, rarity. I mean, an emergency type of thing.
So for right now, it's more common, you know, in, in this situation right now.
Is it more common in support staff?
It is more common in support staff because again, they only have to give a two weeks' notice. With the other employees, you know, that are under contract, they're under contract and we have to release them from contract. Um, so it is more common with our support staff or say someone just has a really big emergency, maybe they're under contract, but we, we go ahead and let them go because they need to be wherever that, you know, that emergency is. Right now, it is, um, a definite need. And so what we do at this point is we determine it is an emergency. You know, someone has said, we planned for them to be there and then they call us today and say, oh, I'm, I'm not coming back. Then we, and that happens right now all the time. Then we certainly consider that an emergency and we shorten the posting period so that we can make sure that we have staff in place when school starts.
That can make a hard load on whoever's left.
It does because, you know, again, it's, we have a hard.
I agree.
Let's, let's talk about custodians. We have a very hard time hiring custodians and we work constantly to get subs in. And most of our subs become long-term employees, but it's very difficult. And then that workload is put on someone else for two or three weeks and maybe taken from another school to put into another school.
And I do hear that a lot about how hard it is on the people that are in there.
So we need to look at how we compensate our employees and maybe we wouldn't have these problems.
Any other questions?
I think as long as you have the flexibility, if you're not satisfied with the pool, to be able to ex, extend as long as needed to get the right person, it's probably.
Again, it's, it's trusting HR to be professionals and, and handle it.
Well, and we want, you know, we want the best employee. We want to recruit and retain. We don't want to keep filling positions. So we certainly want to accept as many applications as we can and review them so that we are interviewing the best candidates.
Off the top of your head, do you remember how many, um, hires we made in HR last year?
Probably three hundred and fifty, three hundred and eighty, something like that the year before, maybe even close to four hundred. The year before was over four hundred and fifty-two.
Yeah, and it was between four and five hundred and three hundred and sixty-five days, not that many workdays.
Yeah.
I mean, they're continuously, and it's mostly classified staff that's continuous turnover. And you're right, compensation would hold, keep people around. There's no doubt. And so we'll continue to work on that in the next budget as well. I agree one hundred percent.
So, you know, one of the things that I have learned throughout my life is people change, so you need to make sure your policies are going to hold clear to what you really want and not just depend on people. Sorry. I've learned hard way.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, next, um, recognition, recognition, let's see, of student academic achievement. Policy six dash six point three was revised in June. The change presented tonight corrects a place where the policy was not in line with itself. The number of decimal points that will be calculated for a student's grade point average should be two in all places. We found that it was not. Uh, we'll bring this back to you for approval on August twenty-first. Any questions about that? The policy, our policies were not consistent with itself. Um, and to let you know, uh, our folks are going through an extensive policy review at this point, looking at policies.
That's a good thing.
Very closely, which, uh, we found hadn't, had not been done for a while. And we're trying to correct things, get it, get it right and make it consistent. And, um, these are things that, that's, that, um, are being caught. So you'll, we'll have a few of these coming, coming back to us as we, as we continue to catch, uh, I don't know if you'd call it mistakes, but just inconsistencies, you know, so. Okay. Um, next, Ms. Dix is here tonight to present an update on attendance, uh, from the last two school years. Ms. Dix.
So tonight I want to share with you, um, our most current outcomes and progress regarding the attendance for Montgomery County schools. Uh, for the past several years, our school division has focused on developing a framework to motivate high attendance expectations for all students and to provide support for those students who have more intense needs. Uh, we've aligned our process with our six-year plan and we've used, um, our tiered systems of support in terms of using positive behavior interventions and supports at all levels for all of our students. So tonight I'm going to be reviewing some of our data points in regards to attendance for Montgomery County schools and I'm going to present it, uh, using a couple of perspectives as we look at this data. So in this, uh, first slide, the chart, uh, compares our average daily attendance, uh, percentages or the, um, attendance rate for the sixteen, seventeen, and seventeen, eighteen school years. Now, the average daily attendance is the number of students who are showing up, um, every day. So in this graph, you can see that we've broken it down into division percentages and then we've aggregated that even a little further by looking at elementary schools, our middle schools, and our high schools for the two different school years. Um, and in this graph, the percentage of students who were absent, it looks at the percentage of students who are absent for less than ten percent or eighteen days or less for each of the school years represented. So overall, for the division, for the sixteen, seventeen school year, you can see that our, um, percentage rate was at ninety-five point three percent for our students who were absent eighteen days or less, or they missed less than ten percent of the school year. Um, in comparison to the seventeen, eighteen school year where it was ninety-four point nine percent of our students who missed eighteen days or less. And in comparison to the state, um, average for that year, it was ninety-five point one. So you can see we're, um, right, uh, pretty much where we should, should be in comparison to the state data. Our elementary school students, um, were attending school at ninety-five point five percent or, uh, or better, as well as our, uh, middle school students. But you can see our high school students, um, that rate is slightly below at ninety-four percent and ninety-three percent respectively, um, in regards to the school years. And so in this next slide, this chart is displaying again, the average daily attendance, but in a little bit of a different format. It's showing the percentage of students who missed a specific range of days during the school year. And so at the bottom there, you can see that we're looking, um, at, uh, the number of students who missed between zero and ten percent, and then from ten to fifteen percent, fifteen to twenty percent, and then more than twenty percent. Um, and this data is broken down, this is basically the way that you would see it on the state report card. And for the sixteen, seventeen school year, um, you can see that, um, the blue is representing the, the largest number of, of students, uh, who missed between zero and ten percent or zero to eighteen days of school. And that's eighty-nine percent of our students that fell in that range. So the majority of our students are missing eighteen days or late, or, or less. The red, uh, piece of the pie, uh, shows the students that would have missed ten to fifteen percent of days. Um, that equals eighteen to twenty-seven days and five point five percent of our students missed that number of days and that would equal about five hundred students. Uh, the green piece of the, the pie, um, looks at the students that missed twenty-seven to thirty-six days. That's two percent of our students or roughly two hundred students. And then the last piece of the pie that you see there is the students that missed more than thirty-six days. That's three percent of our students for the sixteen, seventeen school year and that's roughly two hundred and eighty students. Um, the state average, um, for missing, uh, between the zero and ten percent was eighty-seven point eight percent. So again, we fell, um, a little bit above that range. And the, the state range was for, was six point four percent, um, representing the red piece of the pie, um, um, which looks at the number of students that missed, um, eighteen to twenty-seven days. So if you go back to the previous slide, I'm not going to do that, um, and we look at the average daily attendance, which was, um, the range was like ninety-five point three percent, and the pie that represents the blue and part of the red. And so they, they equal about the same. So I've just, actually just tried to give you a different way of looking at that data. So the next slide looks at our unexcused absences. Um, and I chose to show you this because this is really how we account for the absences for our students. Um, and not only the way that we account for the absences, but the way that we have to respond to the absences based on state requirements. And so our policy, as well as state requirements, uh, recommend that we look at five, um, plus absences, six plus, and seven plus absences. Um, and we are looking at those because we're also to respond to those absences, um, and responding to those absences by calling parents, by making sure that we're engaging with families, that we're, um, putting them on notice or recognizing the fact that those students are missing school. We also, at the six and seven absences, put specific interventions in place and that's when we start writing attendance plans. So I thought it was important for you, you all to see this information as well. So you can see in the twenty sixteen, seventeen school year, um, um, I'm going to talk more about the percentages. You can see that if you look across there, um, at five plus absences, twenty-five percent of our students were missing school. At six plus absences, that drops to twenty-one percent. And at seven plus absences, it just drops to seventeen percent. Um, in that school year, we were implementing attendance plans and, and most of that work was being implemented by our social workers or student intervention coordinators. Um, and you can see, it was making, um, somewhat of a difference in students, um, engaging with those families, making them aware of the importance of their students being in school. And, um, it was making a difference in terms of those students then starting to, to show back up. In the twenty seventeen, eighteen school year, again, you can see that there is, um, a decline, um, in the percentages of students that are missing from five plus absences up to seven plus absences. Um, it's a little bit, um, more significant in terms of the, the drop in the number of students, um, who were not missing school at that seven plus absences. This past school year, we also incorporated at the five plus absences, um, having more school personnel engage with their own students, um, in regards to absences. We felt like it was, and based on some of the ESSA guidance, that it was important to make sure that s, the schools themselves were connecting with those students and not just the social workers. So we incorporated that and I do believe that it has made somewhat of a difference if you look across, um, the twenty seventeen, eighteen, uh, data points.
And you're calling these unexcused absences?
These are unexcused absences.
As opposed to what was in the very first chart, which is just total absences, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, the other thing that you will notice here is, um, you know, there's a significant difference in the percentage points between the number of students who were missing seven plus absences, um, from the sixteen, seventeen school year to the number of students who were missing seven plus absences in the seventeen, eighteen school year. So we're, we're hoping we're on the right path in terms of trying to address, um, the absences in the school.
Is there, is there any way we can get, uh, feedback from some of these students as far as the impact of having their school actually engaging with them too, maybe to make them feel like they're, they care about them?
That, I think that's a really good idea and we certainly will, um, do that. And later on in the, the, my presentation, you're going to see, because we felt like, I mean, what we did this year, w- we certainly incorporated some more school staffs doing that, but this year, we, we need, we know we need to even dive a little bit deeper. It, it can't, can't just be one or two people. This is not, we're not going to make much progress if we're not involving and incorporating as many people as possible and connecting to those students, making those students, um, know that they're welcome, that they're missed when they're not in school. Um, so we, we definitely plan to en, engage more, um, or get more, um, team involvement from, at the school level, um, to make that happen. Um, and we are looking at ways to collect that, the, the data around that as well.
Ms. Dix and her folks are restructuring how they're covering schools this coming year as well to get more focused attention at each school. Um, but, you know, definitely a tremendous improvement on, in, in terms of unexcused absences. And something to note too, while we're talking about it, is the new state accountability. That's a new piece. They actually will, uh, we're, that is, that is a, a point that we're accredited by is student attendance. If we drop below a certain, um, level, we will not be accredited. And, you know, when I've mentioned that to teachers and schools, of course, it's, you know, it can be disheartening in terms of, you know, school, we're being held accountable for folks.
For parents not getting kids to school.
Parents not sending kids to school at times, right.
Exactly.
But, I mean, but then too, my response is that there are things we can do to make kids want to be there. Come to school, make them an inviting place. And that's what we're working on and I think we're doing a great job. You know, look at the first couple of slides where our attendance dropped, just, I think the bar graph makes it look, it's only like a half a percent.
It is. It's not significantly.
It's a half a percent difference between, um, for the all absences.
Yes.
And, um, if I had to guess this year, um, the, we had a ton of absence because of the flu. We had, you gotta remember, the flu was really bad this year. I mean, my house alone, uh, accounted for several days. I mean, that would not have happened. And so we were telling kids to stay home, so that may have dropped that, but, uh, but the unexcused, so an excused absence would be if you're sick, obviously.
Exactly.
Yeah, and so, uh, but the unexcused absences, there's no accountability there. It dropped four percent. That's pretty amazing, I think, and so.
I think so too.
Ms. Dix and her folks are doing a great job.
So, um, this next side just digs a little bit deeper into the data at the five, six, and seven absences. And so what I did was I just broke it down so you can see how it looks at the elementary, middle, and high school levels. Um, and again, as you kind of would expect, um, it looks, the data looks better for our elementary age students. Um, you know, by the time the kids get to high school, we see more truancy because they're, they're not, um, they're being absent because they want to be absent, it's not because parents have given them permission to. And so you, that's just a, one of those data points that we know we have to, uh, look more closely at. And we're, um, being really intentional about making sure that we do that. And so the, the last slide, I wanted to share this with you because as Dr. Meyer just mentioned, um, um, we're going to, the, the way that we're going to be measuring attendance is going to change, um, beginning this school year. Um, so in the past, we've measured the attendance of students by looking at unexcused absences. Um, and the focus has really been on truancy or those students who have missed school without permission. But beginning this school year, because of revisions made by ESSA, we, we will be measuring attendance by looking at chronic absenteeism. And that's defined as those students who miss ten percent or more of the school year, regardless of the reason. And so it's going to change from us not just looking at excused absences, but excused and unexcused. They will all be counted. And like Dr. Meyer just said, in, in addition, Virginia has included the attendance rates as a quality indicator for accreditation. So I included this, this slide and this slide is from this past school year. Um, and I just want to let you know that the data that is reported in this slide is unofficial data. It's not data that's collected to send in to the Department of Education because they're not collecting it yet. Uh, so it's been locally tabulated. But, um, the best that we can tell, um, we are still, um, I mean, it, it's not, overall the, the data looks good in terms of being under that ten percent margin, uh, that we're going to have to reach for all students. At the elementary level, you can see it's, um, right at seven percent. Um, middle and, the middle school, it's again, um, hovering around the ten percent margin. Of course, the high school level is a little higher and that is an area of, of concentration for us for the school year. Um, and then I decided to disaggregate it by, uh, our communities, our school communities. Um, and again, you can see that Auburn and Christiansburg are hovering right at that ten percent, uh, level. Blacksburg is at six percent, um, but our eastern Montgomery community is at seventeen percent. So again, that's an area that we know. It's ha, it's, it's been an area that, that's been a focus for us anyway, for quite some time. So we know that those are going to be the areas that we really need to pay close attention to, that we're going to have to put more services, um, and intervention strategies in place for, uh, for this following school year. And so some of the ways that we've already done that, um, listed some of our accomplishments. One of the ways that we have managed our truancy, you may remember me a couple of years ago, um, in talking about our attendance, talking about our, our family resource team, and it was piloted. And it's basically the brainchild of our court services, um, because we had a lot of students who were coming before, uh, the judge, uh, for truancy. who were coming before the judge for truancy. And, you know, the typical consequence for that has been finding parents, or sometimes students were placed in detention. And that hasn't always been effective because you just ended up with repeat offenders. And so they decided that if we, if it would be possible to create a multidisciplinary team approach around providing supports for those students. And so we have that in our school. We piloted in the Eastern Montgomery Strand, at Eastern Montgomery, or the high school as well as the middle school. Then last year, we moved it to all of our secondary schools. So we had team meetings for all of our secondary schools. And this year, for the first time, we included some of our elementary schools, not all of them, but some of them. And you can see here that we staffed about 145 students just in family resource team in those family resource team meetings. And so what this has done is it's reduced the number of students who also need court intervention. And so that's been a really positive thing. The other thing that we had in place is that we have a truancy officer, and so when we do take kids to court, we have a more consistent and a concise process for taking those students to court. We have one person that's really, you know, operating those, those meetings and facilitating those meetings on our behalf with court services. And so it's just created a more streamlined and consistent way that we're looking at that information. And that person is also very much involved in all of those family resource team meetings. The other thing is that we have created, you know, the tiered responses to student absences, and we're really focusing on educating and engaging our students and families and trying to be more involved with the school staff members, including them in the process. And so in moving forward, in terms of looking at our future work, we're, we're excited this year. Dr. Meyer mentioned e-discipline. Another part of e-discipline is going to be a early warning system that's connected to e-discipline. And so each of our schools will be able to look at their own snapshot of all of their student information, not just discipline, but their academics, as well as their attendance. And so they will be able to, to better monitor and manage what kinds of supports are needed for their, their students and their schools. And their, our principals are really excited about that, so we are too. We're just hoping that having all of that data in front of us will help us make better decision-making processes in place for our students. As we also mentioned, we also restructured our student services office because to manage this, it means that we need to be more attentive and using our staff in a smarter way. So rather than parceling people out, we've just pulled everybody together, and they are, will be supporting our schools. They have less schools that they will have to support so that we can really be a support to them as we're really trying to, to build this, this system of engagement and meeting the needs of our students, as well as their families. And lastly, the biggest thing that we'll be doing is just providing more preventive and proactive measures as we're looking at the attendance in our schools. It's, we're being really creative. My team has worked really, really hard since we only made this decision back in, well, when ESA, the guidance came out, that was back in the spring, and we knew we had to do something different. But we've worked really, really hard, and we've got a really solid process in place, and we're just hoping that it's going to make even a bigger difference at the end of this school year.
Yeah, something Ms. Stix talked about is using, using their people more wisely. You know, what we had were attendance teams, and then we had behavior teams. Well, they were the same kids ending up being talked about in two separate teams.
Yes.
And so what's happened, so we got this group talking about the same kid as this other group, so we've spread the resources, so it all becomes one. Because usually attendance become, you know, there are issues with behavior, you know, actual academic issues, and mental health. And so we have folks at the table who can help address all of that at one time.
So we're looking at the whole child. The whole notion is to look at the whole child. Usually attendance is a symptom of something larger. And so we're just trying to be more proactive in looking at the whole child, getting all of our school personnel to, to be part of that commitment and that teamwork and making sure that that happens.
I know this is a different type attendance thing, but is, do tardies still count? So many tardies as an attendance loss?
So I will just tell you that the data that's reported here is whole-day attendance, and that's what, that's what we're evaluating here, more so than tardies.
Right, I understand, but it used to be-
That so many tardies would equal an absence.
Count it as an absence, that's right. And, you know, I know that was one of the things when Dr. Sears was here, and he had the, you know, the tardy kind of sweep. I'm telling you, I still believe every high school needs to have that. As you sit out in the parking lot, see all of them come in with their Starbucks and their Zonex, and their this, and their that. If you want the seriousness of attendance, you got to get serious about that kind of stuff, too.
Absolutely.
You know, so I'm a huge-
So part of it, data to you all, last year, last year, we cut our tardies in half-
Yes.
-last year because what we required our schools to do is actually, there's a consequence, and that would be Saturday school. Kids would have to come on Saturdays or some type of after-school detentions to make up the time when they, and so we actually, we cut them like in half, I believe, last year.
It's crazy.
I haven't seen the, haven't seen the data for this year in terms of tardies, but yeah, two years ago, it was amazing the number of kids that were showing up late to school.
Yeah, crazy.
And, yeah, and, and, you know, we have made a huge improvement in terms of kids not showing up late because there's a consequence for showing up late. And so therefore, if there's a consequence for it, the kids seem to show up on time, no matter how fast, sometimes we're trying to head to the parking lot, because I had one come past me real fast on Price's Fork one day. I had to follow him in the parking lot and ask him to drive a little safer, but he said, his words were, "I do not want Saturday school. If I'm late one more time, I've got to go to Saturday school." So in a way, we were doing our job. There's, but, but yeah, we've worked hard on that, too.
Other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Stix, for all you do. I know it's a lot of work.
Thanks.
But we're making difference.
Okay, thank you.
It's exciting.
Absolutely. Okay, Mr. Krantz is up next, and he has the next three items. I'll let him move right through. First, updates on Falling Branch and CHS athletic field update, and then carryover funds request, and then a change in the HSA. And so, Mr. Krantz, if you'll-
Well, good evening. I'll try to go quickly. First off, with Christianburg High School, on Phase 1, which is the synthetic turf that is in place, they'll actually play their first scrimmage game this Friday night, and then a benefit game is scheduled on a week from Friday night.
Yeah, and sorry to disrupt you, but it's a great time to remind everyone is invited on August 17th. Be there by 6:45. Board Supervisor, School Board, be recognized, and we'll do a special fun field to, to, to remember the occasion and the opening of that beautiful facility there. So folks are really excited about that. This Friday is actually a scrimmage game. They're scrimmaging Auburn.
Auburn, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, at 6 o'clock. So anyway, I'm sure a lot of folks will be interested in town to, to actually be at that. Yeah, so, anyway, I'm sorry, Mr. Krantz.
No problem. The River Rice Track, we've got all the asphalt down. We needed to put two layers down. Once the second layer's down, there's a cure period of 28 days, so we're in that window. We probably will not get that installed until either the last weekend, August, which will be after the first official game on August 24th, or during the first weekend, September. Okay? And there's just nothing we can do about that. Because of that, the fencing is not going to be complete when we open, so you'll see orange fencing in place because the poles are there for the fencing, but we can't complete the fencing until we've completed the track first. There's just steps we've got to take, or we're going to have problems at a later date. You will see additional fencing is taking place. We've done, we've, and that happens with any project, particularly one this large, that things will come up that you didn't address during your initial budgetary process. And we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the carryover. So we're going to be spending some additional funds addressing some of the fencing issues, particularly around the ticket booth. You'll see that we're going to do some fencing issues in front, facing the pond, the retention pond, but we won't do as much permanent because that gets impacted by Phase 3. So it doesn't make sense to do stuff permanently and then whatever, we finalize Phase 3, and then have to come back and take that fencing out. So it's more of a temporary to give it the field, the look, with the intent that we're going to be doing Phase 3, but it'll be at a later date than we are now. You also see some additional cement work to address, like the log jam that's created at the pass gate and the ticket booth. Ideally, the thing would be to probably redesign that whole front because of monetary considerations and the desire to get this, the project completed. That's not something we're addressing today, but there are some steps we can do to help minimize it. So for example, at the pass gate, rather than the pass gate interfering or co-mingling with the ticket booth, now we can put them through the gate, the fence, on their own separate entryway. And so that's the way we keep that crowd moving within that side. So you'll see some cement work will be done going from the, the pass gate down to the track or to the walk area. You'll also see some, some cement work that needs to be completed if you were out there now. That's going to go from the, the cement area, basically as I come in, to the entryway, to the visitor's side of, of the stadium. Phase 2, we have started. It has a completion date of February 1st. Phase 2 is the girl softball field. That's the biggest part of that particular project. It also has some work on baseball, and it has some additional work just around the whole complex. The site work, if you've not had a chance to be out there, it is, it is a large construction zone now. So if you drive out there, if you walk it between the tennis court and the gymnasium, you'll see fencing. It's construction fencing. There's not much we can do about it. If, you know, in order for us to do the work we need to do and minimize the liability to the district, it, it has now become, that area's become a construction zone. But I have to say that the school seems excited about it. I know their administration's extremely excited about it, and I know the district's administration's excited to get it going on that work. We also will be working on walkways as we start the construction. We have to make sure that we continue to have ingress and egress for fire. We have to be in still compliance with the regulations there, and there's some doors on that side. But we'll be doing, as part of our overall walkway project, which you'll see new walkways from the parking lot to the softball field, as well as to the baseball field. So the main point of entryway now for both softball and baseball, after we've completed this, will be from the student parking lot. It won't be from that back lot. It'll only be coming from the student parking lot, okay? You'll see the synthetic turf going down for the girl softball field, the dugouts, and then the concession stand and the restrooms, and those are all starting. So they have commenced, okay? And there's a lot of work that we got to get done. The biggest one is site.
On the concessions, where is it? I know we had talked about it when I walked up there.
We've got it closer to where you and I talked about. It's not going to connect because that door number 10 is a main ingress and egress point, and that's something that we, we want to stay cognizant of.
Right.
And this will give them where, if they actually have an overflow crowd, this will put where it's located at, that you could use the gym right through that door as your, as your overflow. And it wouldn't be where, you know, you have to have two groups of parents working as teams because one's way over here and one's here. Now you've got them close enough that you could work as one.
Gotcha.
Okay.
And it's rest rooms, plural, right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm just one restroom.
Yeah, no, no, ma'am. It's, it's both men and women.
What you did is that happened there, too. Right.
No, ma'am, it's restrooms.
I'm going to count them, okay?
Ma'am, they'll have to be, they'll be in compliance with the count.
So one of the concerns with the concessions from the softball and the baseball folks were to be able to see their children play while they're working concessions?
You, you will be able to see softball. Baseball, you'll see some of it. You won't, it's not where our softball and baseball fields are aligned, and with the slope that we have between softball to baseball, there's actually no one place that you can easily put that and still see, you know, if I'm a parent working it. But you can see from where we're locating it at, you'll see softball, and you'll see the majority of baseball. You will be able to see-
I'm pretty sure, because I, I looked at that, because the, the stands are on the bank for baseball, and the, we actually, I knew how important that was. I, I think we can see all of it. It's going to be real close.
Well, it depends on where we put our restrooms. It depends. If we put the restrooms toward the parking lot, you'll get a better view.
It'll be fine.
If the restrooms end up going on the baseball side, then it would limit the, it's just depending where we end up doing. And that ties to where we're bringing in our power and where we're bringing in our water.
Well, we know it's very important to those groups because the, the parents are working the games.
Right.
And they want to watch a kid play and work the games, too. But, yeah.
Well, you also like the lines where people can see it while they're waiting in line.
But maybe this, this new project, they can work out something. Having a decent concession stand, they can do, just like football, JV works varsity, varsity works JV. The same thing with baseball. Maybe they can, you know, change that up because, because you can't see the game going on when you work concessions, and I've worked thousands, you know, so it's-
The issue, and I, I brought that up, the issue with that, which hopefully we can solve at some point, is JV plays the way varsity plays home, and so the JV parents are going away to see their kids play, so they're not available. You know, and I've talked to the athletic directors, and of course, this goes back to other schools having lights. You know, I, I come from a, you know, from a district where every school had lights. And so we did JV, varsity, baseball, and softball the same night at the same venue, at the same place. And so that we did that, actually, the JV parent, or the varsity parents worked the JV game, then they flipped, you know, which worked out just great. So, so I'm asking athletic directors to get more of those types of games, because we're going to have lights. So we could actually do that-
Right.
-at our place. And it creates a great environment, too, when you have all going at the same time. And so, but yeah, that's, that's probably the biggest obstacle there is getting, and coaches like it as well. Coaches like for, the varsity coaches like to watch JV teams play. They're their future players, and, and, and they can, you know, give a lot of good input into those programs. So, so yeah, we'll, you know, hopefully work, work on that, but, so yeah.
It should be doable, but we still haven't finalized that drawing, so it's just where our base guy will locate that restroom. We'll make it the best-
Because that was, that was a big issue for parents.
I'm going to work real hard to try to make that work, because I know that was a huge issue.
I understand. I've coached many of them, so I understand it. And then the other two parts of this project will be the lights and the, and the bleachers, and we'll talk about that a little bit more when we get into the carryover funds. Phase 3, we're in the development phase, and right now, at that point, we don't have much more to report on that. That's going to be the concession stand and restrooms, which needs to be addressed on the football side, as well as, you know, and that's football, track, lacrosse, and soccer. So all those sports and activities, and it'll also be band camps and band competitions, like we had band camp there about a week ago. And used to have our schools for dormitories, and so there'll be a lot more activity and use of those fields because with that synthetic turf, weather doesn't impact you. So we'll see a greater influx between all of those sports, including track. So all of that will increase the activity in that complex significantly. And so we'll need to address in Phase 3 that concession stand and restroom, particularly the restroom, even though the concession's small, but the restrooms are really small from a number standpoint, significantly. And so that needs to be-
Add that to it. Bad.
I just said, they're, they're not sufficient for the crowds. How's that?
And I'll say this, too, and of course-
How's that, Ms. Vaughn?
Putting the track in, we've already, Christiansburg already has been approved to host the region track meet this coming year. And we put in for the state track meet this coming year already, which, you know, we're competing against some other schools, but good sign. Head of Virginia High School League actually came and looked at the facility the other day. And so we're hoping we can get that. If, if we get a state track meet, it will bring hundreds of thousands of dollars. It will fill up hotels, it will fill up restaurants. It is a huge deal for the community. It's been in Harrisonburg for several years, but they're looking to move it, so we're hoping we get it. And it could, I mean, for our community, our facility will pay for itself. There, there's no doubt about that. So, so I will keep you posted as we hear about that. And I'm in contact with Dr. Haun, who's Head of Virginia High School League, politely asking him to give us that. So we'll, we'll see how that goes. So we're real excited about it, and it's going to be a great, great facility.
And Falling Branch, I'd like to, first off, congratulate both our staff there at Falling Branch Elementary, as well as the facilities team, because, and, and that's from the administration to the custodians, to everybody on the team that's been there, including purchasing in the warehouse and everybody with the furniture, because they've taken, let's just say, a difficult construction project for a lot of different reasons, and I might can go into all the details, but it's going to be ready for the start of school. And, you know, I- And, you know, I think it's because while the contractors work hard, but I think our team from Montgomery County Public Schools is the reason why it's going to open on time. And they need to be commended for their efforts and everything that they've done because they've gone above and beyond the call of duty in pulling this one off. Right now, the day, the interior works about 99% complete. If you had asked that a week ago, it wouldn't have been close to that number. We will still have paint and casework and punch list items to complete. The contractors are focused right now on painting and punch list and casework with the goal to be out of there on before August the 14th, okay? But they've come a long way. Teachers, we delayed them going into their rooms on Monday so that we could complete some things. They started coming in today and they're beginning to move into their space. On the exterior side, where we're still have to complete our fire lane, which is doable before the 14th. The landscaping is probably the one thing that is very questionable, whether that's going to be ready on the first day of school, but that has no impact. That's something we can do during the school day or we can even do after hours. The parking lot is going to be resurfaced and striped. The goal is to have that done by Tuesday. The asphalt work is completed, but they want to do their striping at one time. One thing that came up during the process is anytime you do a major renovation under Virginia code, you have to bring your life safety issues to compliance with the code today, not when the building was built. So there's some handicap spaces that back when they were built, they could have a five degree slope. Today, code only allows a 2% slope. So all of that has to be re-engineered and reconfigured. That's in the process of being done, both from an engineering standpoint as well as from an execution and construction standpoint. We believe that will be done by Monday and the goal is to be painting on Tuesday and doing all of our striping there. The playground that's planned outside of where the bus loop is, we've encountered some soil conditions and that is one problem we have run into on that site, is the soils. So right now, the playground in all likelihood will not be available when school opens. And that's that smaller one, they'll still have the big ones in the ball fields, but the one there in the bus loop won't be available. Completion date is August 14th. I've put out to September 1st that if we just run into any weather issues or if anything does pop up, we'll still be doing punch list items in all likelihood through that date. But we won't be interrupting and impacting any of our students in school. Other major summer projects, you have Harding Avenue and that's a parking lot resurfacing as well as a new sidewalk can inch your way into the school. That project is going to be completed on before August 15th. They're into the final stages right now, so...
It looks so nice.
It's come out very nice, but we're in the final touch-ups and August 14th is the date. We'll easily meet that date. Gilbert Linkus, we're doing the re-roof. As you'll hear me say when we get into the carryover, I'm against partial re-roofs. I'm a believer that you do the whole building because anytime you do partials, it's difficult for new and old to bond and have good tie-ins. But we're doing a partial there, it's underway. The entire old roof has been removed from the school. We've dried it in, so everything's dry. We're now have, when the weather comes in, we're not have flooding in the buildings. There's no leakages that are taking place. The new roof has been installed, it's about 65%. There's a deck area that was damaged during the removal process. They repaired that today. Unfortunately tomorrow's the weather and so we'll get back to it probably on Thursday and get back to it. The completion, they're in liquidating damages and that's one thing that we as a district have not enforced. It's something I do believe in, there's a contractual relationship. We have an obligation and they have an obligation to us. We right now put that out of September 15th. The roof itself and all the material will be on place before school starts in all likelihood. What'll be left is the flashing and things that you really don't see too much of, but we need to complete and that's a, you know, that's a fairly long, it's about a week to two week time period, so they shouldn't have a problem with September 1st, but we've given them to a reasonable September 15th.
Before you move into carry-on funds, if we can go back to Falling Branch just for one second. You were saying the playground that's by the bus loop wouldn't be ready and that's for the...
There's a fenced in, that area's scheduled to be fenced in and a smaller playground to be installed. That area, the fencing, the soils, is we put in one pole as a contractor notice, it's just sinking too much right now.
Gotcha, that's cool. That playground equipment was pretty good, but I had talked about concerns about the larger playground and when last time I was down there, it was all construction zoned, so you couldn't see what was going on. But I'm hoping we did something there because that's...
I can't, I really don't know that one. I mean, I'm, that's one I can find out for you Ms. Vaughn and get back to you.
Okay, because it was a must and we talked about it and a lot of, you know, the old schools, different places didn't get and PTAs had to pay for it. But anytime we did new construction, they got new playground equipment.
Let me say, if it's a damaged playground, we will take care of that pronto.
Okay.
Okay, but I'll have to...
It's just not much there, I mean, I mean, that was about it, okay.
I just need to go back there. It's just unfortunately with everything else, I just have not had the opportunity to get back there yet.
Okay.
But we'll take care of that.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am. So carryover funds, I broke it down into the two categories, which are revenues and expense. On the revenue side, you can see the budget, which was our final as adopted budget of $110.9 million. Our actual revenues came in at $112.3 million, a difference of 1.4 million. The bulk of that comes from the state and that was primarily generated as a result of the increase in the ADMs that we had versus the budget. The budget last year, we utilized 9,450 students. We actually came in based off of our March 30th, where remember we got a large chunk of change in that fourth quarter of the fiscal year, came in at 9,637. So an increase of 149, well, no, sorry, 187 position students, which is an increase of 2%. So that drove that revenue, okay? And in this year's budget, we've projected it out using 9,608 students. Now, if we continue to see the influx, which we'll talk about Christiansburg Elementary in a second with carryover. If we continue to see that influx, which it appears we will, then we will anticipate another bump in that budget because our actuals will come in off of the actual ADMs, okay, at that time. But we've not used that in the carryover. On the expense side, this is what you would typically see as our carryover if you're looking at it year to year to year. And the bottom line, which line that says unspent appropriations of 387, and I'm sorry for the, I don't know, I was thinking periods instead of commas, but $387,985. That would be traditionally what as a district we've seen is our carryover into, to the county, okay? What we propose on our carryover funds, so we've included the revenue as well as the 387 on the expense, is $504,000 for Medicaid carryover, which is one we have every year, typically it's about $420. A PBIS grant of $8,700, a SPED grant of $1,600 and those are normal items that I've seen looking historical, that I've seen in carryover from year to year. New would be the following. Then this would be the request for the board to approve, to move forward for us to go to the board of supervisors and seek their approval. The purchase of two buses and the related equipment being the Zoner, the GPS system that we now have in all of our buses. All of our buses have that Zoner system. The development of options to begin to address the capacity challenge that Christiansburg strain is facing. And that's not something that I see with that, if you were to approve it, that would get spent immediately. It's something over the long haul because it's going to be a process and a lot of dialogue and sharing of information to come up with a sound plan that everyone's comfortable with and moving forward. To complete phase two on that CHS project and to begin, to begin with possibly some of those funds into phase three. We've talked about that, that the budgets, the actual numbers on the CHS projects are coming in higher than the budgets were. And that's not taking a shot at any individual or anybody in the process, but as we're fine tuning, as we're getting into the details of this particular project, things are popping up and it's causing us to have numbers that are a little bit higher on our bid side than were initially projected. The other thing is with, as Dr. Meyer said, with the state track meet, there's a large pile of dirt, topsoil, that's right behind the baseball complex. That pile needs to be addressed as we start to go for state track meets and regional track meets. The size of the discus throwing area and the shot put throwing area need to increase than what's traditionally been there. And so we probably will end up that whole back. So from the, from, you know, if I had the home side on this side and the visitor side here, from this part going toward our fence line, we will end up filling that in and making it level. So it becomes a usable space for our field events. And we'll have to do some walkways, so parents, when they go to watch their children or coaches have access to those areas during the meets and the courses of the activity. Also, it'll help us when we do football games or band competitions. It gives us another means of getting into the stadium where you'll see we've got now a shell road that goes behind the tennis courts going into, between tennis court and baseball field. That's going to be paved or asphalted and then this will continue the asphalt. We can do the walk around around it. So the 450 is not just the completion of the original phase two. It also just ties up a lot of things with the project that would make it a clean, you know, when we finish it, phase one and phase two are done. And there's nothing else left hanging out there. The worst thing I think to do is with this project and basically $3.9 million going in, to have a lot of open items, okay? So it looks partially done, you know, it's at 98%, but everybody's going to remember the 2%. This way, we can ensure we get everything done and everything tied up and then we're ready, you know, to start rolling on phase three. So that's where the $450,000 comes from. And then the remainder of it, capital repairs and maintenance. Right now, the three, we have three items and I haven't done a priority list. I've just done a partial priority, talking to the team. But two roofs, one at Biggs, one at CSS, we need about $650,000 of those two roofs today. And that was on the roof study that was done many years ago. But that roof study said it'd be funded at about $2 million a year. We haven't funded it at that kind of number. Now I can tell you this, because we've had these conversations in my prior districts. If you look at the studies that are out there, if a building's going to last 50 years, which is what every school shoots for with their buildings, a good rule of thumb on what needs to be invested in that building, and that includes the athletic complex, so it's the whole campus, is 2% of its replacement value should be invested year to year. Now if you look at the total square foot this district has, which is about 2.8 million, if I remember my numbers right, it's about $14 million a year should be invested, okay? Now, what happens when that, when that doesn't happen, which it doesn't, and that's true throughout schools because there's just, the question is always where we're going to get the money. But that gap doesn't stay the same over the future, it goes up. And then the other thing that happens is the failure rate is going to be greater. Think you'll have mass failures that'll take place. And I hope that never happens while I'm in Montgomery, I had enough of that in Richmond.
We had enough here too.
Okay, yeah, I just don't need to have that for a while. So what we have today between those two roofs and then CPS's mechanical system. CPS is the only school in the system with only one boiler. Every other school has two. If one that boiler goes down, you can't open schools, you don't have heat. The mechanical system there on HVAC is hanging by a thread. Each of those units run right at about $250,000 apiece up on the roof. That's another $1,250,000. So combined, we're well over $2 million just on, and just three schools. And we haven't touched all the life safety related issues. I know of issues with asbestos in other, in other buildings because of the age of the building and what's above the ceiling line. So that $585,000 that we put down would be used for, as we see the emergencies, which would be probably one of those three items that I've just addressed, but we'll come back to you with specifics, but that gives you an idea of where those funds will be year more to.
Let me comment on a couple of these as well. First, the buses, the good news with that is it brings us to eight buses for the year, which is, that'll be three years in a row, eight buses each year. And I've talked to you prior about the importance of the eight buses a year to keep on a consistent schedule. So that would actually do that. So that's a victory considering there's no money in the budget for, there's no actual new money in the budget for buses. So that was, that was great. The, you know, addressing the capacity issues in Christiansburg, we're over capacity at CPS and CES, yet we have empty classrooms now at Falling Branch. So, you know, the need to look at, you know, studying, redrawing lines to move some students to the, to Falling Branch. That's going to be necessary to, for us to look at.
Well, and I was going to say, there's, just like, and I'm just using this as an example, where I live, my kids went to Falling Branch, but the other side of the road halfway down, they all went to Christiansburg Elementary School. I mean, that's what was this crazy where it's almost like not even laid out good, I mean, they're...
And it's no better in Blacksburg because Rush Mountain, half goes to Gilbert Linkus and half goes to Kipswitz.
Well, and I get you got...
Two sets of buses up the same mountain.
And I was going to say, I get you got to have a line somewhere, but you would think, like, like I said, these kids out past me are going to, you know, and it just didn't make any sense the way it was laid out.
We're going to look at all of that.
Good idea.
And also, we're going to look at the, we'd like to look at the new elementary school and how the new line would be drawn. Because what would be good about that, it would actually give families possibly a few years, hopefully not too many years in advance notice of where the kid would be going to school at some point. You know, we anticipate that the most we could take from CPS and CES, between the two would be 100 to 150. And so that's about, say, 60 per school, okay? To go to Falling Branch immediately or next school year. Well, last year at this time, CES had 416 students. There are, I think, around 470 some now. So what we would do is, we, all we'd be able to do is bring CES down to where they were last year at this time by sending kids to Falling Branch. You know, the real, the real problem would not be, we would not be able to take any trailers out, okay? The real problem would be, not be solved until the new elementary school is built. Then we could get the trailers out of CPS and CES and so...
What we'd be doing is keeping from adding new trailers.
Yeah, right.
Or making it miserable.
Right, because what's happened...
Yeah, or shoving them in there.
Yeah.
To give you an update, this week, yesterday, with the numbers coming back from CES in fifth grade, we're right at 25 in seven fifth grade classes, 25. So we added, you know, through our lapse funding, we looked at that and we're able to add one teacher. And, and so luckily we have one room left and it was the computer lab.
Which we don't need as much anymore.
Which we don't need now because we have the devices now. So it worked perfect, so...
This year.
We have that one room left, that was it. So we were able to empty out that and we're adding a classroom. We hired a teacher already. Today they did interviews, they found somebody who they liked and so we've already offered that job. And so, but thinking about it, what's going to happen by adding a teacher in class of 25, you're going to only reduce the class size to about 22, you know, in seven sections.
And then you're at what we're at at BMS and BHS.
Yeah.
But it's still better than...
It's better 25.
It's better than 25, I mean...
But I guess what I'm saying is...
And what do you do about things like cafeteria? Where do you hit a, a point where you can't, you can't feed them anymore?
I mean, because they already get their food in one room and come down the hall and go in the gym where there's tables set up and that's where they eat.
They share, right, the gym and the cafeteria are the same. And so that creates scheduling issues and so, so it's just, it's a little bit of a mess. And so that's, you know, the ideal, in an ideal world, what to be... And so, that creates scheduling issues, and so, so it's just, it's a little bit of a mess, and, and so, that's, you know, the ideal, in, in an ideal world, would to be, you know, obviously, to wait until we get the other school built, or do, to, to redirect, to just to make sure we're right and get it done. But we can't wait. We've got to move forward and get, get some kids to Falling Branch.
And to say, in regards to whoever designed CPS back in the day, because I was the first year that went there, and it was designed, and that might have been the way they did things back then. The lunch cart came around, and you got your lunch tray inside in your classroom, so they didn't need that lunchroom. It was just, that's how it was done.
That's how it was done.
Exactly, and that was the new thing for the time, you know, so...
And a smaller population of students.
Right, and so then, oh, how cool to have this open and everybody, and, you know, so we'll just go from classroom to classroom, and they'll eat their lunch at their desk, and they had a process, but, so that's kind of why that was that way, but, you know, it don't work now, so...
No, it doesn't. In fact, you know, that's one of our CPS, and of course Harding, are two of our seventies buildings, and, and as we know, the seventies buildings are being replaced now, prior to the fifties and sixties buildings.
Right.
They, it was just horrible construction during that time, and so, so yeah, so we, Christiansburg is booming, and so, it's, it's, and Blacksburg is packed.
It's everywhere.
I mean, it's just, it's, it's everywhere, you know, and, and, you know, Auburn Elementary, we're packed at Auburn Elementary.
It goes back to that, I'm very...
And we're, I mean, we're just a couple of classes away, having, making decisions at Auburn Elementary School, right, Ms. Adel? You know, and so, it's, yeah, so, the, the good news is, we're getting more kids, which is creating more funding from the, the state. The bad news, we're getting more kids, and we're having problems...
And state doesn't pay for facilities.
Finding places to put them, creating overcrowded classrooms and that kind of thing.
It doesn't count, but...
Yeah.
State sends you money to teach them, but not money to provide facilities.
Absolutely, yes.
They stopped doing that a long time ago.
Just, just curious, out of curiosity, if we had the land already, how, what, what is the timeline with the PPEA?
We expect, we expect one to be delivered in the next thirty days.
So, if one were delivered in the next thirty days and things were to go just perfect?
Mm-hmm.
How long would it take to build an elementary school?
So, you'd be looking at a forty-five day period for advertisement, your reviews. So, say you're at sixty, you've got to go from concept, well, you can do conceptual depending, let's say it's just one that comes in. You could go from conceptual to your contract. You're probably looking at honestly sixty days to get a contract executed and make sure you've dotted every i's and crossed your t's. So, you're a hundred and twenty days out. Once you've got that, and say the site's there, you would begin your design work. Once you've got the basic design, not your detail yet, but you've got your basic design and your layout, you can go and get your permit to do your site work, which would be the thing to do. Start site work in month five or six, complete your, your design work, so that once you've completed site, then you're looking at basically a twelve-month, easily twelve-month period to have the building ready, because you just go straight from site to your construction.
So, about eighteen months.
About eighteen months.
So, I want to go back to the, talking about where lines were drawn. Remember, those lines were drawn a long time ago, and the county has grown inside those lines, so it may seem kind of crazy now, but it made sense at one point. Now, we have to make it make sense again.
Unfortunately, the county didn't grow where it was supposed to, like where it was supposed to grow.
Well, like I said, I, I know you got to have lines somewhere, like the road would define the district type lines, and I get that. It was just odd that, like I said, my kids went to Falling Branch, and all of these kids went to CES, you know, and I'm going...
Because not all those kids were there years ago.
Well, and that's true, but why would they send them here instead of sending them there? You know, I don't know. So, it was just, it was just odd.
I'm sure there was a reason.
I'm sure. You're exactly right.
It's just that there's got to be a line somewhere.
So, is it the will of the board that we can proceed with the carryover as we present it, because we need, if, I need to get that approved, if that's y'all's desire, so I can take it to the Board of Supervisors?
So, that brings us to the draft.
To the draft of the...
Yeah, the letter is the standard, our standard form letter. It's the numbers we presented in the category.
So, may I have a motion to approve the, the letter, request for supplemental appropriation for the county at this time?
And the exact amount, could we state what that is that we're asking here?
Yes, it is, let's see, excess revenue of... I'm going there.
Three thousand eight hundred...
Three hundred and eighty-seven.
Three hundred and eighty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-six.
Is that it?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So, the total is one point seven million that, that's there, because it's being allocated amongst all of those different categories.
But we emphasize to the Board of Supervisors that technically only four hundred, less than four, three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars was left from last year's budget.
The other one is all state money.
Yeah, we spin it down. I mean, that's, that's pretty, about as low as you could possibly get, so we did a great job at managing our money this way.
Oh, it did a tremendous job.
I mean, to get it down to three hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars.
And just to clarify, this is our carryover?
Yes, ma'am.
We're asking them to give back to us, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
And all of it's going in education.
Get confused between that and their carryover.
No, ma'am, this is not the county.
Okay, so you asked for a motion?
So, I have a motion to approve the supplemental appropriation.
So, move.
Yes.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any other questions for Mr. Crames? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We approve the letter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, one last item, and then I'll go sit down and shut up. On our health savings account, which we opened up a year ago, the IRS has changed the, the amount that could go into the account. So, on the employee only, it went from thirteen twenty a year to thirteen fifty. On the, the family, basically from twenty-six forty to twenty-seven hundred. We are requesting as an administration to go to those numbers, continue to fund it at that level. The estimated financial impact to the district is about fifteen thousand dollars, and that's easily absorbed with inside of our operating budget today.
Are you asking for a motion, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am, if you would.
I have a motion to, yeah, that's okay. I was just looking. I was late to look at the slides. May I have a motion to approve the health savings account, plan proposed changes as presented? Marchon.
Second.
I have a motion second. Any other questions regarding that, for Mr. Crams? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We approve the changes as proposed.
Thank you. Okay.
Good. All right, next, school crisis plans. School board must certify school crisis plans each year. The plans are available at the school board office for your review. We'll ask you to certify the plans at the August twenty-first school board meeting. Any questions about that?
Any big changes on those? Anybody knows?
Ms. Dix, any big changes in the school crisis plans?
I know there are big, 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 a lot of big binders, and I went through them once. I will, if I don't have to, I don't want to look through them again. But I'd like to know what I'm approving, so that's my...
So, actually, we did. We, we adopted the new model that was put up by DCGS a couple of years ago, and so, there are some changes this year.
It will be nice to look at it, so I'll...
Is there any way we can get that, that portion?
Well, I'll tell you, you know, here's what I can do.
Summary of changes in the...
Yeah, there is, yeah.
Here's what we can do that will give you a nice summary of it. Actually, I sent it out to, I tweeted it out actually during the, the conference last week. There's a great DCGS of video online explaining that process. It's okay if I just send that to you. It's about...
That'll be great.
Uh, twenty minutes maybe of a video. I sent it actually, I sent it out and actually, where parents could see what we do and how we do it and how it works and, and that kind of thing.
That's good to know. I mean, for us to know, too.
Yeah, a, a, absolutely. So, I will, I will send that to you, and so, or you can go back and look up my tweets, you know, so I'm sorry.
Send it to me, please.
I'll send it to you.
Thank you.
Sorry. You tweet a lot, okay?
Couple times.
I am, and, sorry.
Well, thank you. Now, we are at unfinished business. Any unfinished business the board members would like to...
I have this, I just have a question. It's just kind of a fun question. When I got my little bus, the hundred thousand bus, it sits on my station, and I think everybody that comes in there every day comments on that bus. And one of the main questions is, and I only because we talked about buses before, I'm doing an unfinished business. They're like, well, they're going to, is the number going to be one hundred thousand? Is that what we're going to, I mean, oh, I ride bus one hundred thousand. I mean, is that going to be it, or is it going to be like one?
We're going to make it into one of our numbers. We can't, we cannot.
I, I think the plan...
Kind of expect a kindergartner, they're getting on bus one hundred thousand.
I don't have a clue.
I think the plan was to also, but also leave that number on there.
We are for, for identification purposes for us as well. It's, it's kind of got none around the state.
Sure.
But as far as the students, it's going to be a regular bus number.
I just had to ask, because like I said, every day, somebody asks me that question.
My, my question was to Eddie at the time of the presentation was, who's actually getting it?
Yeah.
You know, who, who gets the luxury of driving that?
I'm not sure.
Same as every other bus. Same bus.
Same bus.
Any more unfinished business or questions? And then the next item is new business. Are there any matters of new business board members that you can think of? And here now, how about announcements and information? Our school staff opening convocation day is Monday.
Glad you said that. I was just going to say, even though we have help at work now, and I could actually go, I have a doctor's appointment that I made about four months ago, and it is Monday morning in Salem at eight fifteen, and I am not canceling. So, wish everybody well, good luck, good start, and, but I won't be there.
And it is at eight o'clock, and it is in Christiansburg High School. And any other announcements? I know dialogue on race.
Right, on the twenty-fifth, the dialogue on race will be starting at five o'clock at Caboose Park. Love to have everyone come. Focus this year will be law enforcement.
Twenty-fifth, I think, Saturday.
Saturday.
Any other announcements for members that you can think of? If not, you'll see the upcoming school board meetings. On the twenty-first and September fourth. And after that, we are ready to enter the closed session if you don't have anything else. Our next order of business is closed session. May I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss one personnel matter as authorized by section two point two dash three seven one one of Code of Virginia?
Samu?
Second.
I have a motion second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Now, we're in closed session.